Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's good to be with you. I hope the three-day weekend treated you well. Of course, Memorial Day behind us, and we have a veteran on set right now in Bellamy Brown. We're going to talk to him about Memorial Day. We're going to update you on his campaign, his platform, and everything he stands for as he makes a push for Charlottesville City Council. He's in a unique position running as an independent, in that the June 11th primary, not as important to his campaign, although he certainly is going to be following it very closely. We're going to reintroduce you to Bellamy Brown. This guy, fantastic people. I think if you're a small business owner, a locally-owned business owner, this guy is someone that you need to follow very, very closely. Before we go to Bellamy Brown, let's thank some of the folks that make this program possible. Let's give some props to a four-generation strong company, and that's Interstate Pest and Service Companies. This business started in 1969 with one man, one truck, and a willingness to work hard. That was Mr. Wells. In 1969, he had himself, a truck, and a payphone. He would go to his first customer, service them successfully, find the closest payphone, and say, "May I come see you now?" Now, it's a four-generation strong business, an office in Richmond, an office in the Shenandoah Valley, the headquarters around the corner at Bodo's Bagels on Harris, and guys, almost 100 employees. Interstate Pest and Service Companies undoubtedly serving this community extremely well. We'll also give props to a good friend of this program, Dr. Scott Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Whether it's chiropractic care, physical therapy, sports medicine, Dr. Wagner and his team are changing people's lives. Who's got your back? Dr. Wagner's got your back. Guys, I have the easy job. I sit in front of this microphone, and I'm myself, five days a week, 12:30 to 1:30 on the I Love Seaville Show. We also have three offshoot programs where we're featuring some of our clients in the I Love Seaville Network. It's Harris Tolbert, it's Judy Wickhauer, it's the team upstairs that have the difficult job of keeping me on track, and it's no easy task. Harris Tolbert, on that note, why don't we go to the studio cam, and let's welcome the dapper Don to the program. His name is Bellamy Brown. He's flossing, per usual. How are you, Bellamy?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
I'm doing well. I think I would be remiss, and welcome Gerard Smith, and Jimmy Toronto, Nicole Skroll, and Kyle Ripley. Now, a thousand, I mean, you're looking at 1,900 people here to the program here. Let me throw this to you here. You're a veteran?
Yes.
A Marine?
Correct.
Proud Marine?
Yes.
Memorial Day for you. What's it mean to you?
So, I think there's things that people get mixed up. So, we have Memorial Day, we have Veterans Day, and we also have, I believe, Armed Forces Day. For me, it's Memorial Day recognizes those who have given their lives in service to our country, primarily on the battlefield. And so, it's just a recognition to basically, you know, thank them for that, even though they're no longer with us, and to pay tribute to, you know, not only the sacrifices that they've made, but also the sacrifices that their families have made in allowing them to serve our country. So, that's a, I was down at the VFW memorial ceremony that they had yesterday, and it was a really nice ceremony that was there, and you had different, I guess, forces around there. So, you had the Marine Corps League, the American Legion, which I'm, you know, part of, and then some other ones, who came together, you know, really to kind of show some support and some love to our veterans who have gone on in the realm of battle, so.
Were you able to have a cold one, spend some time with family and friends? What'd you do for some fun as well?
Well, I don't, I mean, during this phase of, you know, of campaigning-
You're grinding, huh?
I am, very much so. Over the weekend, I'd been, you know, I'd been to Arlington, Fredericksburg, Waynesboro. I mean, I was just traveling, you know, kind of just all over the place. There wasn't really any downtime. I did manage to get some King Family Vineyard-
Nice.
-wine, so that was good.
Did you go to Polo?
I did catch the end of that. That was after, that was after the ceremony here. I caught the end of that. It was a nice event, and I intend to go to more of those.
Linda Bowen says, "Hello, guys. If you have a question, comment, or anything you'd like to relay to the Charlottesville City Council candidate, Bellamy Brown, I'm happy to relay it to him." Sizzle reel this. We're going to start with this question. Bellamy Brown-
Yes.
-give us an update on how the campaign and platform are doing as you make a push for one of three city council spots?
Yes. The campaign is going well. I mean, I'm pleased with it. It's, you know, it's definitely a lot of work, but, you know, it's something that I'm jazzed about and I'm energized about in putting forth that effort. Where I sit strategically right now, I'm just, you know, waiting for, you know, June 11th to fill itself out. That way, I can, you know, tailor my strategy a bit more and be able to, you know, make the strong push toward November 5th. You know, a lot of the stuff, I keep close to the vest, and that's on purpose. I look at this from the standpoint of, you know, again, being a Marine, going out and conducting a mission, knowing that I have a long-term plan, but there are things that may come up on, you know, in that process that I have to adjust. And so, that's the way I look at it, and where I stand right now, I'm very pleased with how things are coming out.
I love it. Jimmy Toronto's watching on Long Island. James Watson, big friend of this program, is kind enough to join us, guys. Give the show a like and a share on any platform that you are watching. Bellamy Brown, I'm thoroughly impressed with everything you stand for. I speak about that quite a bit on the program. In fact, I put you at a three-to-one favorite to win a spot on council. I got Lloyd at two-to-one. He's got a deep war chest. I got you at three-to-one. I got Michael Payne, and I'm caught some heat from the pain camp for saying this. At five, six-to-one, I got a Pinkston nip-it at Payne's heels. At seven-to-one, and I got the field at like 12-to-one. I see this as a four-horse race for three seats. You, Snook, Pinkston, and Payne. How closely do you follow your opponents? You're a competitive guy, former soccer player.
Yes.
You're an alpha. You like to win. How closely do you follow your opponents in this race?
Fairly, I mean, fairly closely. I've, you know, kind of done my due diligence and everything, and, you know, looked at where I'm positioning myself. So, you know, again, I think it's, I think it's pretty tight, you know, going into the primary. Like I said, we'll, you know, we'll adjust our strategy, you know, from the results of that. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's almost like a kind of like a Michael Phelps type of deal, where it's just like, you know, I'm focused on what my mission is and not putting a lot of stake into, you know, everybody else, because I know that as I present my message, as I, you know, work my campaign, I think the rest will take care of itself. I don't like to do a lot of talking. I like to, you know, let the results speak for themselves, so.
John Wine and Keswick, welcome to the program. Amy Hutchinson-Williams, thank you kindly for joining us. Mark Wogman as well. Like and share the program. Put this candidate in the spotlight, guys. June 11th primary.
Yes.
How do you look at it? Does it mean as much to you? You're an independent.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it does and it doesn't, because, you know, depending on who comes out, that's, you know, like I said, my strategy will be, you know, tailored a bit more from there. But, I mean, you know, like I said, it's, I think there are obviously, you know, two strong candidates that are coming out of there.
Who do you think that, Snook and Payne?
I'm not.
I mean, you said two, not me, right there. You went down that road, dog.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's pretty obvious. And then, you have the other three that'll play for that third spot. So, you know, I mean, and at the same token, you know, we're kind of, from what I hear, it's kind of in a closed mindset. So, it's, you know, it's, I would say, less than 100 people who are making a lot of noise. So, we don't really know what the electorate's really going to, you know, bring out come June 11th. So, it could definitely, could catch some surprises. But, you know, as I see it right now, there, you know, there are the two, and then, you know, it'd be up to the other three to fill in that last space there.
Bill Grandford, thank you for sharing the show. We certainly appreciate it. Give it a like, give it a share. Blake Dunning of Green County, welcome to the program. End the sizzle reel there. That's the end of the first sizzle reel. Let me throw this to you here. As an independent-
Yes.
-surprises, anything catch you off-guard? Anything as you expected? I mean, you're an independent, Mayor Walker, one is an independent.
Yes.
Not many independents, you know, getting dubs, getting W's here.
Sure.
Anything surprise you so far?
Um, no. I mean, I think, I think when we talk about, you know, politics in general, I mean, you have your par for the course, where you're going to have people that like you, people that don't like you. The things that I'm pleased about is that I have broad support, you know, across the board, and that's what I'm looking to, you know, to accomplish here. I want, I really want to focus on, you know, as much as possible, trying to unify, you know, our city and find out where these ways where we can, you know, find those common allies and work together. But, nothing, nothing's really that I've been, you know, caught off-guard by at all. So, you know, I have a background in politics, formal education. I've done grassroots. So, you know, I'm pretty, I wouldn't say I'm a novice at this.
Carol Schwab-Barnett, welcome to the show. Jonathan Galasko in Richmond, thank you for watching us. Let me throw this to you here. I think, I'm going to give you some props. I think one of the things you've done really, really well is staying almost politically neutral. Lloyd Snook has catching some heat, namely from Mayor Walker.
Okay.
Michael Payne has caught a lot of heat, namely from the entrepreneurial, business-minded community, the developers, et cetera. Brian Pinkston's caught some heat, perhaps because he's not being specific in his approach to things. He's more macro instead of micro.
Sure.
You, I feel like, and maybe it's something to, you know, running as an independent, maybe this is part of it. You have not caught much heat, but you have a lot of momentum.
Yeah.
And you're certainly one of the horses at the top of the pack.
Okay.
How have you gone about doing this?
Well, so, for me, right now, and it's a lot of, so, on my platform right now, I have, you know, transparency, governance, and leadership. I want that to be, to resonate out there for a little bit before I, you know, delve further into the issues, you know, on my webpage, because I think that's the crux of what we need in terms of, you know, efficient governing and being able to get things done. We need to have those core focuses of transparency, governance, and leadership. And then, from there, a bit later on, I'll actually put out, you know, where, you know, where I am on the issues. And I think it's something that will gain broad support overall. So, yeah, I mean, like I said, I think I'm, I've dealt well with people, you know, challenging me, and I welcome those challenges. I mean, that's part of the course. But, I think that, again, my message resonates across the board, and it's hard to really, you know, at this point, get me in a place to where it's like, I catch some heat, but it's heat that's based off of legitimacy. It's not just like, "Oh, we're going to yell at you just because." And when I, everything that I try to do is put out, you know, facts, and it's hard to really go against what the facts are. And so, I think that's what's allowed me to be in that neutral space, is because you can't argue with facts. I mean, facts are what they are. It doesn't matter whether you dislike them or not. You can yell at me all day and long. That's perfectly fine, but the facts aren't going to change.
I love that answer. I love that answer. Here's a sizzle reel waiting to happen. And this is a question from Linda Bowen.
Okay.
Linda Bowen has this to say. "Many of us older citizens in Charlottesville are increasingly concerned about the rise in real estate assessments, which amount to a tax increase for us homeowners. Some on council now have floated the idea of an increase in the tax rate as well. If elected, would you commit to not increasing the real estate taxes, Mr. Brown?" That's a good question.
Yeah, no, it is. And so, you know, as you mentioned earlier, you know, I work in the financial services industry. One of the things that, in advising clients, is that we work on is how to mitigate against taxes. So, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of tax increases because it takes capital out of, you know, out of, you know, our clients' pockets. And when you're talking about, you know, senior citizens that are on fixed income, and you're still continuing to raise the taxes, you basically-
You're shrinking their margin.
Correct. And so, it makes it difficult for them. So, from this perspective, I wouldn't, I don't want to go in blind, but I would definitively say I lean more towards not raising taxes as opposed to, you know, raising them, because I want our citizens to have capital in their pocket to be able to, you know, afford housing, to be able to eat and do those basic necessities that we should all, you know, have.
I love that answer. Sizzle reel that answer right there. In a lot of ways, and guys, we're live on seven channels across the I Love Seaville Network. Welcome Peyton Alley to the program. Grace Australia says she's watching in North Downtown right now, and she's intrigued by you. Like and share the program. Like and share the program on any channel that you are watching. I think you feel like taxes are regressive. I certainly feel that way. Now, I'm an entrepreneur-
Yeah.
-who has the real estate taxes on the building-
Yeah.
-and taxes here-
Yeah.
-for the business, the ad agency. I mean, taxes are a kick in the you-know-where for me.
Yeah, and I've heard it multiple times, and I, you know, from friends on Facebook. And again, it, you know, and I see what taxes can do. You can't, I just, I'm really, I'm really against government working against our citizens. And I think that's one of the ways, when you keep, you know, when you continue to do that, I think that we need to look for other ways to obtain the capital, whether it's, you know, are we managing our, you know, our assets well right now, or is there something that needs to be, needs to be changed in that space? Because you're not, you know, you continue to raise taxes, you got, you know, income that's staying stagnant. I mean, you have no other choice. I mean, that's kind of, you're just pushing people out, because they can't, you know, they can't maintain around here. So, again, for me, you know, I lean more towards not raising taxes, but looking at, you know, where we are overall in terms of our financial position.
Maggie Slickman, welcome to the show. Amanda Truplowski, thank you for joining us. Give the show a like and a share. Chris Turner, thank you for doing that. People giving you some props here. They like what they say. Nicole Skroll, thanks for joining us. Let's talk about what's going to happen after June 11th. You've touched on it a little bit.
Yes.
I would think that you're kind of like, almost like, say, like a running back, okay? And you're going first, second, and third quarter. You're going hard.
Yeah.
You're trying to move the chains, baby.
Yeah.
But you know the fourth quarter and the fourth period is where legacies are being made.
Correct.
You've got some gas in the tank that you're saving for the fourth quarter.
Yeah.
And the fourth quarter from you is what, 6:12 to 11:05? June 12th to November 5th?
I would say, I would say, I would say it's already started, but hardcore, I would say 6:11 to November 5. I mean, and that's November 5 at, you know, 11:59 PM, provided-
That's when the votes are counted, guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, it doesn't, for me, I play zero-zero. Like, I don't have any, you know, traction or any following. I need to get out there and work for every vote. And it'll be the same thing, you know, let's say, provided I do get on council. It's the same thing. One of the things that I've, that I've learned in doing this is that there's a steep learning curve. If you want to do this job well, there's a steep learning curve for what you have to learn in the process. And I intend to fully, you know, if elected, I intend to fully continue to learn and be the best representative of our city as possible, obviously in collaboration with the council members. But this is, I mean, it's one thing theoretically to say, you know, I'm going to run for office and yada, and this, that, and the other.
But to execute is different.
Yeah, it's completely different, and there's a lot that's involved. It's, you know, it becomes taxing, but you got to get up every day and be thankful for the opportunity and just go out there and give your best. But definitely do the due diligence. I've seen, you know, in some instances in the past where the due diligence hasn't been done. Everything hasn't been, you know, really looked at in terms of, you know, how do you be an effective, you know, council member? And for me, that's just not where my head is. That's not where my heart is. I'm giving 100%, 110% to this role, and I want to do it well. Everything that I try and do in my life, I want to do it well and give excellence to that. So, yeah.
That's the third sizzle reel right there. Start with my football analogy through that answer. Lee Capshaw, welcome to the show. Robin Federer, thank you kindly, kind enough for joining us. JoJo Robertson, thank you for liking the program. Let me throw this to you. The day-to-day, people love to get kind of like that, you know, bug-on-the-wall insider's look on what your day-to-day is. I mean, your celebrity and your brand, I think, is increasing.
Thank you.
I love your game on social. I love what you stand for.
Yeah.
Just what's like 24/7, 365 in Bellamy Brown's life?
Well, it's not easy to say, I mean, to say that. I mean, I'm doing, still doing a full-time job, you know, maintaining that. And then, obviously, here, you know, setting, because I, so I have, you know, my cousin Carl is the strategic advisor. I'm running campaign.
Carl Brown.
Yeah, yeah.
Love it. Love it.
Yeah, so I'm, so I'm, you know, running the campaign myself, doing the treasury and everything. And so, so when I look at that, it's, there's no day that's the same. I mean, one day I could be, you know, at a couple of, you know, meetings at City Hall, or out in the neighborhood, or doing other meetings with other various groups, you know, talking to constituents and things like that. And so, there's no, there's no, it's a lot of work. It's a, it's a true grind. I would say that out of everything that I've ever experienced in my entire life, there's never been something that's been as much of a grind as this is.
Really? And you're a freaking Marine?
Yeah, yeah, there's-
Why?
I think just because it's-
Because being a Marine ain't no easy task.
True. I think just because of the complexities that are there, the issues that we're dealing with, the personalities on either side, the issues that we're dealing with, and, you know, trying to come to some sense of measured, thoughtful, well-researched, you know, responses and with regard to those things. And that, you know, it's, it's something, there's, there's five people in council for a reason, because you have to balance all those things. So, and it's, you know, it's not easy, but, you know, it's something that I'm passionate about, and I'm definitely willing to put for the work for.
Ken, let me throw this to you, and then you can go anywhere you want. Sandy Short, welcome to the show. Kate Caldwell, thank you for joining us. Jeremy Stanwyck in DC has given you some props right now. Compare and contrast running for city council to being a Marine.
So, being a Marine, I mean, that's, like, I, I mean, I needed to, I needed to go to Marines to get college money, so I was ready to, you know, a month after graduating, I was ready to go and do that. There was like, there was just something about me that, you know, I was ready to go in this structured environment, do the best that I could, and then kind of go from there. So, and that's roughly about, you know, I guess about four months now that you're doing the training. Once you get out of the train, out of bootcamp, you know, and you're in the fleet, I mean, the rest is, you know, if you're, as long as you're doing what you're supposed to do, the rest is pretty straightforward. This, it's unpredictable, you know, every, like, every day, something could pop up. You may need to address it. You may not need to address it. You're still trying to get, you know, knock on the doors and get the numbers up in terms of people who actually go out and vote on November 5. You're, you know, you're working on, you know, again, the branding. How does the branding look and making sure that that's on par? So, there's all these, these different, you know, plates that you're trying to spin in the air, whereas a Marine, you're, I want to be careful about how I say it, but, but you're, once you're a Marine, it's pretty much, it's pretty much straightforward. You know, you know what you're supposed to do after you come out of bootcamp, so.
This may be more dynamic?
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely. It's definitely more dynamic, just because, I mean, you just don't know what will happen. Whereas, you know, being a, being a Marine, you have some structure there, and you can, you know, adjust and go with the flow.
Most favorite aspect of being a horse in this race and least favorite aspect of running for Charlottesville City Council?
Uh, most favorite aspect is just coming back home to serve, you know, serve people that I care about. I'm serve people that I love, serve my community. You know, I love, I love being back home and doing this. The least favorite aspect, I don't know, I guess, when being tired catches up to you, I guess, for the most part. The, yeah, I mean, I would say that that's it. It's just, you know, when being tired catches up to you. I don't, I don't have anything that I am in disagreement with that's taken place so far. I'm not affected by anything, you know, negatively in this space. So, I try to keep it under the radar so I don't get, you know, much negativity or drama.
Sure. You're a likable dude, and I feel like, and I see this, like, you can go into any room-
Yeah.
-and I feel like you can get, and it's a skill. You can get the folks to like you.
Mm-hmm.
And it's authentic.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons that it's legit.
Yeah.
Because you're just a real dude.
Yeah.
You know? I think part of that probably came from team sports. Part of that probably came from going to bootcamp and being a Marine, going to college, whatever it may be, being a businessman.
Yeah.
You've got to build trust quickly.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it came, came down to growing up here. I mean, in school, I wasn't the most well, most popular, well-liked guy, not because I was, you know, bad or anything, but I just wasn't a popular kid. And so, I got to feel for, you know, for what's, what that was like, and that in turn, you know, made me want to be-
Friend everybody.
Yeah, correct. And so, and I found myself throughout, you know, my educational career here, doing just that. So, I could fit in into any group during that time as well, and I think that just carried on. I look at people as individuals. I don't look at you, yeah, you may be a part of a group, whether you're black, white, whatever, but you're an individual.
You're human.
Yeah, and each individual has their own story to tell, and that's what I look to connect on with, with people.
Tyler Berry, Catch the Chef, welcome to the program. Brent Lillard, thank you for joining us on the show. Bellamy Brown is running for Charlottesville City Council. Tiffany Rosales, Skipasa, thank you for joining us on the program here. Let me throw this to you here, some current event stuff. What is your thoughts, I'm sure you saw it, you're all over social. You're on social as much as I am, and that's a lot. I do social for a living. Well, I guess you're doing it for a living now, running for council.
Yeah.
I mean, that's essentially what you got to do. What did you think, this is a tough question for you. What did you think of Mayor Walker's commentary on Lloyd Snook?
Um, I think-
It was very heated. It was very, it was very to the point.
Okay.
Somewhat, can I call, I think I said it on, on social and on our website, and it got a lot of traction. Somewhat bitter.
You know, I can't speak for any council members or candidates' perspective. I can only speak from my own perspective. I think that each and every person is entitled to whatever view they may have, whether we just, whether we agree with it or not. So, from, from that perspective, I'm only looking at how am I serving, how am I going to serve our constituents here? And within that, within the space, let's say I do get on council, how do I make the connections with at least two other council members to be able to move the people's business forward? The rest of the stuff, I don't really, you know, I don't really get into. That's not where, that's not where I am.
Did it catch you off-guard?
That's not my lane.
Like, what if it had come to you?
Well, I mean, if it had come to me, then I would have addressed it properly, you know, as I've done with some other things. Did it catch me off-guard? I would say that I don't have, my barrier for being caught off-guard is, is, is pretty low. So, I don't, you know, it's almost like I'm expecting anything to take place. And again, you know, they're both within their rights to have whatever their opinions.
Makes America great.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, so I leave it at that.
I love it. That's a fair answer. I'll leave it at that. JoJo Robertson says, "There are many that are running for Charlottesville City Council. What makes you, Bellamy Brown, better than the others that are running for council? Why should we vote for you?" Good question.
Sure. And, so, I don't want to see, I don't want to take it from a standpoint of that I'm, that I'm better than anyone else, because I know that I'm not, and I know that someone's not better than me. I know from my perspective, what I bring to the table is the ability to work through conflict resolution, the ability to be able to negotiate with various partners. I think I look at this from a big picture, from an operational perspective. I don't look at it from one particular, you know, avenue, whether you're talking about transit, or affordable housing, or taxes, or whatever. I look at this from an entire perspective, and how does moving one lever affect the other? And how do we, you know, how do we, you know, make a sound, comprehensive strategy for lifting our community up together? You know, the saying goes, "There's a rising tide, lift all boats." That's kind of what I'm focused on. I do my due diligence. I, you know, am fully under the framework of, you know, transparency, governance, and leadership. And I don't think that that's really been, you know, pushed out there as significantly as it has. I think there's more focus on this is the issue or that is the issue, but we haven't, we've left underneath, how do we get those issues, or how do you get your ideas, you know, moved along? And that part has been, you know, left open, whereas I've said, you know, repeatedly, you know, working in collaboration, you know, both with our public, private, nonprofit partners, working in collaboration with members of the council, working in collaboration with members of the community to be able to get things done and to move our business forward. So, from that perspective, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily been articulated by, by some of the other candidates, but that's where I come from, in addition to, you know, having experience, you know, on a board itself and understanding the governance structure, you know, having background in business and being able to understand that's, that aspect, respect for the rule of law, and knowing how to navigate that and how to make that, you know, work for our benefit, and just being, you know, a collaborative-minded person overall.
Rick Henderson says, "Councilor, excuse me, soon-to-be counselor, Bellamy Brown, I'm a lifelong Charlottesville resident. How have you seen the city change in your lifetime, and how can it help you in this race?" It's a good question.
Yeah, and I think, I think that goes to, there was, I think there was something that Mayor Walker had posted a couple of days after, you know, all this stuff had come up. And quite frankly, I feel where she's coming from in this, where she was talking about, you know, the Tenden Page neighborhoods over there. So, I grew up on 12th Street, which is a couple of blocks over.
Yeah, Tenden Page, historically a black neighborhood.
Correct.
Now, not the case.
Correct. Yeah, so, Tenden Page, West Haven. I went to school with all, with all those, the people that were growing up there. I mean, we're, you know, still friends, still have family and stuff over there. I think that that is, that is a perspect, Washington Park being a big thing, I think I mentioned this last time. When you look at the places where the black community has been historically, and you look at things now, I think that's something that's significantly changed for me. And this is something through conversations that I've had in the background, where it's like, you know, where is that space that black people can go and feel like, you know, this is, this is what we had, you know, back, back during that time, that-
Where is that space?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So, you're saying nonexistent in Charlottesville?
I would say at this point, it's not. I think there are people behind the scenes where we're trying to, you know, you know, get that space, you know, implemented there. I was talking to my cousin, another cousin last night. It's just like, you know, Goko on Cherry Avenue is like-
Love that spot. Love that spot.
Yeah, it's one of the last, like, black places that we have to really go compared to what, you know, you look at Tonsoo, again, Washington Park, it's not really, it's not really the same. So, so from that perspective, it's changed significantly. I left, you know, my dad moved us out of here in 94. I'd been back and forth, back in 94, all that stuff was still there. I was in DC for a while. And a lot of the stuff that I've seen in DC, with the exception of, you know, the stress and the type A personality, is now here. So I can, you know, come in, you know, into the amenities and everything. And it's almost like, well, there's nothing that's really changed, you know, compared to DC. So, and I'm going back to his question just to make sure I cover that again.
Yeah, how has Charlottesville changed? But this is, I think you're answering it.
Okay, yeah.
This is fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, and that's-
This is real.
Exactly. And that's how I've seen it, how I've seen it change. One of the things that, for me, that I want to spur within the black community is how, or what are some ways that we can participate in some of these changes from a monetary perspective? And then also, you know, having our voice expanded. I know it's, I know there are places right now where the voice is there, but when we look at from a monetary perspective, you know, I don't think that that's there as well. And so I want to, you know, kind of-
What are your suggestions?
Well, so I'm due to talk with a couple of people about this. And then Rich Skyler is one of them, who is, I'm going to meet with later this week. He has a good program where he's, you know, getting people back to work that are in, I guess he would say, more difficult situations. That's one. And I won't say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not for reinventing the wheel. If there's something that's working, I want to, I want to be able to, to push that-
Amplify.
Amplify, correct. Amplify. So you have that. Do you do more with, you know, K-Tech, amplify their results? You know, these things that are actually putting money into people's pockets to help them navigate, you know, some of these things, those are the things that I want to push out there. I'm due to, I know New Hill Development is doing some things. I'm due to meet with them in June. And then, and then quite frankly, like, you know, I'm looking at the top 10 jobs that for 2019 where college students are coming out. All of them are in the tech sector with the exception of one, which is an investment banking analyst. Data, the data scientist being the number one. So, and I know that there's some conflict between, you know, wanting tech here, wanting, quite frankly, from what I'm seeing, it's, and looking at behind the scenes, it's already here.
Right.
You know, so-
We're talking Joffrey Woodruff, who's doing Code, the Center of Developing Entrepreneurs at the Ice Park. He's the guy who owns the hedge fund QIM right across the street from us. He's catching a lot of heat. He did $125 million donation to the University of Virginia to create a new data science school. A lot of folks are saying that's a farm system for what he's trying to do at Code, the Center of Developing Entrepreneurs, and then the old Ice Park location. He's essentially creating a pipeline and a farm system. I mean, I'll throw this to you, and I love this conversation. You're speaking of mackerel and micro terms. You're a businessman, you get trends. I look at the tech space, it's already here. He's just structuralizing it a little more.
I would, I would say that, I would agree with that, with that assessment. It's definitely here. I mean, I've, I've talked to a number of tech companies behind the scenes, and it's, I mean, it's already here.
Is it bad for Charlottesville?
I think, I think it depends on what you're, where you're coming from, what side of the seat you're looking on. What I would like to see is that a lot of our, you know, black and brown kids and our kids from here in Charlottesville get involved in that space. I know that when Jim Ryan came here last year, he said that, you know, tuition would be free for, if you were making $80,000 and below. I think that fits a good demographic of our constituents here. If we can get them into that space to where, for those who want to be in that particular field. I mean, you're giving them money right then and there if that's something that they want to do. I just had a buddy-
I mean, that's huge.
It is, it is. I just had a buddy from JMU up in DC win a national award for being, for the Association of African-American Engineers. So it's not something that we can't do. I mean, we're investing in STEM, we're investing in coding and all these other things. And the money is right there. And you don't have, you have low barrier to entry with regard to, you know, education, provided you do get into UVA. I think it's right there. I mean, I just, I don't see any way around that. I mean, the people that are, my clients that are doing well are entrepreneurs and people that are in that tech space. So it's just like, for me, I see the numbers. I see the benefit. I see what's there. And I think that that's something that, as opposed to, you know, hating it, it's, you know, it's something that we should be all over. Tim Cook at Apple was saying, the reason that they go over to China, the reason they go over to India is because they don't have people here to be able to service the needs that they have. You start building that space where we do have that base to pull from, I think you can start pulling people up, you know, financially in that, from that perspective.
I love that answer. That is one, 100% has to be a sizzle reel. Okay? Rick Henderson's question, all the way through that point on the show. He covered so much. I thought that was one of the realest aspects of this interview here. He has to go, he's kind enough to give us his most precious commodity, his time. He is on the clock at work and he's sharing it with us in Charlottesville. So we got three or four minutes here with the council candidate. You mentioned, and I want to learn here. You mentioned, and I had a great conversation with Carl Brown about this, two different times on the show. I freaking love Carl Brown. I mean, I love Carl Brown.
Yeah.
Because he's real.
Yeah.
That's what I love about him. The dude is real. And his tagline is be real.
Yeah.
You know, the dude is just the man.
Yeah.
Why do you think, in your words, why do you think that the Goko on Cherry Avenue is the last bastion or epicenter or spot for relaxation or comfortability for our African-American community in the city of Charlottesville?
I mean, I guess just from the standpoint of gentrification. I mean, that's-
Is that what it is?
I think, I think when you're, when you look at, and I, so that word has negative connotations. And, yeah, I mean, I guess you could say, you could, you could say so. I think, I think it becomes, it becomes that. And again, when you look at, going back to the whole taxing thing, you're taxing people out of their homes. They can't afford to, you know, to pay for it. Some, now, now, a lot of the, that's the other thing. A lot of, a lot of the homes that are being sold are actually private homes being sold to, you know, the developers and everything. So, so it becomes a thing of-
It's a catch-22.
Correct, correct. So it's hard. If it's, you know, if someone wants to sell out of their home, they're well within their right to do so. Now, whether the city, you know, the city can do some things to try and, you know, get in that space or intercept that, that's something that, you know, has to be, you know, there's more due diligence on my part to really look at. But, I mean, the private sales are, you know, it's one thing that you just can't, it's hard to stop, you know? But I would say definitely, yeah, when you, when you have this influx of new people coming in, that, I mean, it starts to push out some of the old, some of the old spaces. And that's, that's what I would say it is. A combination of those things.
I mean, I worry, and I say this all the time on this program.
Yeah.
And it's a catch-22 for me.
Yeah.
Because as someone who owns an advertising agency and has 23 rental spots in this building.
Yeah.
Fully occupied now.
Yeah.
But I like having the disposable income in the community.
Yeah.
Because that's the clients I'm servicing.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's also the tenants that are renting here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm also worried that if the disposable, disposable income continues to grow in Charlottesville and Alamo County-
Yeah.
-that eventually we're just going to evolve into San Francisco.
Correct.
And then it's going to turn into like a community-
Yeah.
-of just filthy rich people.
Yeah. No, I mean, I definitely see that. So, I mean, I've gone out to, you know, Earlysville. I've gone out to Louisa. I mean, some of these homes, you're still looking at, you know, $300,000 or what have you. And they're, you know, kind of, you know, I guess coming in here for work, coming somewhere for work to be able to get that money or they already have that capital. And I think there is that, there is that trend. And that's one, that's one of the things that, you know, going back to what you were saying earlier, what's changed? I think, I think there's a balance between how I feel about it. Because, yeah, I mean, the people that I've grown up with, the way that I knew Charlottesville, you know, growing up is far different from where it is right now. And I think, I think the pendulum has already started swinging and we're trying to play catch-up. And I think that, you know, if you-
I mean, look at West Haven. There's a freaking apartment tower that is towering over West Haven.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
I mean, and you brought up West Haven earlier. I mean, and we've talked about this with Carl.
Yeah.
I mean, he makes the point, and I agree with him, that eventually, West Haven's going to be swallowed by developers and as they, as the UVA footprint expands.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know all the details behind, you know, what's going on with West Haven in particular. What I have, what I have found is that, you know, people have, were given promis, oh, that's what it was. So, one of the things that Mayor Walker was saying is that people were given promises they would remain in Tenth and Page and everything else, but they were, you know, they were basically snowed. So, so I do, from what I see in terms of like a 10-year trajectory, I do kind of see that perspective. But I would like to know that the city would do something to kind of mitigate against that or as best we can. There are a few, there are a few other people that I have to talk to to get, you know, some more information on doing my due diligence and everything. But I wouldn't disagree with what I see and what, you know, Carl has spoken about. But I think that there, we can't just allow it to just trend that way. There's something that we have to do if we're actually going to be effective councillors, you know, for the city of Charlottesville. We can't just say, oh, these people are coming in, everybody else who's poor, and, you know, and what have you, you guys have to be kicked out and to go from there. I think that we have to find some real solutions for that. And that's why I don't, again, this is a negotiation piece for me. I don't want to demonize a developer because I need to talk to them as well, just as much as I need to talk to people who are trying to, you know, have these homes and stay in their homes. I don't want to, when you're trying to negotiate, you can't call someone the devil and expect for them to work with you, you know? So, yeah. Unfortunately, that's, that's kind of the trend that I see. I do, in other conversations, I do know that UVA can, do know, I do know that UVA can do some things behind the scenes. But, you know, that's still to be determined. But I think as a, as a community, we need to work together. We need to, you know, set aside our personality differences and look at the core issues. Look at how we solve these problems as a community together.
Love that answer. That's a perfect way to end this program. Rico Hearn and TJ Moir, thank you for joining us on the program. Dude, you're amazing. Seriously.
Thank you.
I seriously mean that. Bellamy Brown, guys, he's running as an independent for Charlottesville City Council. What's the campaign website?
It's bbthenumber4cc.org.
bbthenumber4cc.org. Check out his website. Follow him on Facebook. I'm very impressed with Bellamy Brown. Very, very impressed. June 11th is the primary. He's running as an independent, so November 5th is his big-time date. I think you're going to see even more of him following the June 11th primary as we whittle the Democrats down. My name is Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seaville Show. We close the program the same way every single time. We encourage you to embody the golden rule. It's not about religion, it's about treating others how you want to be treated yourself. The golden rule. Charlottesville needs it. Harris Tolber, Judah Wickhauer, Jerry Miller, Lauren Linsky and the team upstairs. It's the I Love Seaville Show. We are back tomorrow at 12:30 with a brand-new program for you. Enjoy your afternoon. So good, so good. Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Do you have his email address, Tolber, or Judah? Let's get your email address and send you the content for your question.